Good morning and welcome to the Standing Committee meeting for Wednesday, October 21st, 2020. Council will continue to meet virtually on Tuesdays and Wednesdays at 10:00 a.m. Until further notice, all meetings will be live streamed on the city's YouTube channel. Our first order of business is public comment. I would like to remind all speakers that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation, which are or may be before city council, and profanity will not be permitted. Once you are called, please give your name and neighborhood for the record. Our first speaker is Shaman Pohmai. I do not see, but I will double check Shaman Pohmai. All right, our next speaker is Aikuhana Halmaokina.
Readings of peace. Readings of peace, light, and love. My title is Aikuhana Halmaokina, the Grand Inca of the Aroqua Confederacy of Aboriginal American People. It has been a pleasure speaking on the record at city councils to explain the plight of the Aboriginal American people, to explain the history of the Aboriginal American people, to explain the culture of the Aboriginal American people. We had the pleasure of meeting a council representative yesterday, and it was a delightful conversation. It was an intense conversation, and it was a necessary conversation to put the narrative of the original people of America on the agenda of city council and all those who purport to do business in our homeland, in our native land, in our indigenous land of America. The reason being is, as set forth in a lot of different legislation, the foundation of the business that you do today, under the guise of a government that is for the people and by the people, you must understand who those people are and what your duty is, and the oath that you take must be upheld. And in order to do that, you must understand what your position is, what your duty is, what your job is to the people. And I believe it is a great opportunity for Pittsburgh to shine, to be a leader, to be an example for the nation as to how you are to honor and respect people when they greet you and allow you to come to their homes and to be safe, right? We welcome all people to our borders and their shores when they arrive via boat to the Americas in various different places and locations. So we would like to continue this dialogue as it is of the utmost importance to honor us while we continue to work with other city institutions, whether it be federal, state, and our local level. We are here to forge the great relationship and the trust responsibility as agreed upon in Article 1, Section 2, Clause 3 of the Constitution, and excluding Indians not tapped. We will continue to have these conversations. And again, I would like to thank city council for hearing us and honoring your oath. I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Minister Dominique. Is Minister Dominique with us? I do not see the minister. Seeing no further speakers, that exhausts our speakers. We'll move on to our Standing Committee agenda, and would a clerk please take the role?
Reverend Burgess. Mr. Coghill?
Here.
Ms. Gross? Mr. Kraus?
Here.
Mr. O'Connor? Mrs. Kelsmith?
Ms. Strasburger?
Here.
Mr. Wilson?
Here.
Mr. Lavelle Chair?
Here.
I'm here too, by the way.
Six members present.
Thank you. That takes us to our first committee for today, which is Finance and Law, which is chaired by myself. We have one deferred paper, Bill 715.
Bill 715, Resolution Providing for the Issue and of a Warrant in Total Sum of $40,000 in favor of Deborah Terseak in care of Thomas J. McLean as Squire, Dugan &amp; Associates, as final settlement related to the action filed in the Western District Court of Pennsylvania.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? The bill is recommended. That takes us to our new papers, Bill 795.
Bill 795, Resolution Authorizing the Execution of a Quick Claim Deconveying All the City's Right, Title, and Interest into the City Own Property Located in the First Ward of the City at 661 First Avenue and 702nd Avenue Designated in the Registry Office of Allegheny County to the Urban Redevelopment Authority of Pittsburgh.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill 796.
Bill 796, Resolution, Amending Resolution 557 of 2016 to Remove Certain Properties Designated as Lot and Blocks, 2P110 and 2P120 for the Transaction and Corporation Agreement Authorized Area.
Motion to approve?
Thank you.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill 797.
Bill 797, Resolution Authorizing the Issue and of a Warrant in Favor of Murphy and Prokotsky as Attorneys for their client, Willamay Matthews, in the Amount of $31,000 related to the full and final settlement of a litigation filed in the Allegheny County Court of Common Pleas against the city.
Motion to approve?
Thank you.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill 798.
Bill 798, Resolution, Further Amending Resolution Number 797 is adopting and approving the 2018 Capital Budget and the 2018 CDVG Grant Program and the 2018 through 2023 Capital Improvement Program by reducing facility improvements, city facilities by $260,000 and increasing remediation of condemned buildings by $260,000.
Motion to approve, brief discussion, please.
Second.
Councilman Gross?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I just want to recognize the work of Chief of Staff Gilman. We talked extensively about her inability to take down the number of buildings that really do need to come down. He worked very hard and quite diligently to be able to assemble this pot of money to take down some of the most problematic demolitions that we have in the city. And I don't want the moment to pass without recognizing his work and how much I appreciate what he did to put this together.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The bill is recommended. Bill 799.
Bill 799, Resolution Providing for the Sale of Certain Property Acquired by the City at Tax Sale Items A through G, 5 Vincent, 329 Industry, 334 East Warrington, 807 Crivical, 0 Lovelace, 0 Oxfield, and 223 Alice.
A motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion?
Just brief if I may. Mr. Chair, I have three on here. I'm not familiar with with any of them. I just want to leave an open door just in case we need to remove one on Tuesday, but for now, I think it's fine and happy to vote it through. Thanks.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill 800.
Bill 800, Resolution Providing for the Conveyance by the City of Certain Property Having Been Placed for Sale to Adjourning Property Owners in Conjunction with the City of Pittsburgh's Side Yard Program, Items A through C, 126 Meadow, 0 Keel Board, and 1017 Marina.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion?
I have a question, quick question. The side yard program, I understood that, is that discontinued? Do we have somebody to know if that is still?
Not to my knowledge, but we, I'm not sure. Does anyone here that can answer that?
Yeah, I thought somebody told me, a resident told me it was kind of put on hold, maybe, maybe because of the virus. I don't know. But yeah, I really like the program. I just want to make sure it's up and running and available to the residents. I just got conflicting, you know, comments about it. So nobody's here, I guess, to answer that?
Not that I see, councilman.
Okay, I'll find out. I'm fine.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill 810.
Bill 810, Resolution Further Amending and Supplementing Resolution Number 855 of 2011 entitled Adopting and Approving the 2012 Capital Budget by Transferring a Total of $20,000 of War Memorial Capital Funding from District 1 Neighborhood Needs to City Planning.
Motion to approve, discussion?
Second.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes, this is the bill originally transferred of Neighborhood Needs Funds to fix up some war memorials in the Brighton Heights area. And I actually have an amendment to the bill because this is the actual payments, the city planning, so they can pay the contractor that's hired by the city. And so I'd like to make a motion to amend the bill to reflect the total cost, which was $17,889.98. And that was, the amendment was sent out yesterday. So hopefully all members saw it and are okay with it.
So there's a motion to amend. Can we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, all those in favor of the amendment say aye.
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 Any opposed? The bill is amended. Any further discussion on the amended bill? Seeing none, all those in favor of the amended bill say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. That exhausts that committee. That will take us to our invoices. We need a motion to approve the invoices.
So moved?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'm staying.
Any opposed? And one abstention. Invoices are approved. That'll take us to our P cards. I need a motion for the P cards.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? P cards are approved. That takes us to our Public Safety Services Committee, chaired by Councilman O'Connor. New papers, Bill 801.
Bill 801, Resolution Amending Resolution, 654 of 2017, which authorized the city to enter into an amended professional services agreement with Humane Animal Rescue for Professional Services in connection with the detention care or the euthanasia of domesticated animals in order to extend the term until December 31st, 2021, and add $300,000 in compensation as the city plans to soon develop an RFP for the forthcoming procurement of said services beyond 2021.
Motion to approve with discussion?
Second.
First of all, I just want to say, I put the camera on specifically because Councilman Lavelle called me out the other day. So I just want to make sure that he knows that I do have the ability to put the camera on. Second, actually, on this bill, I don't know, is anybody here for public safety?
I am here, David Madden, Animal Care and Control.
David, okay, perfect. So this is an extension for just one year, is that correct?
That is correct.
And what are we doing with this? Is this our regular bill that we usually pass?
Yes, it is. We had a meeting.
Oh, sorry. No, my only basic questions are, is this where, this isn't just for euthanizing animals, it's also like to capture release as well as take to the humane centers, is that correct?
Yes, it's the exact, they agreed to sign the exact same contract they signed for 2020.
Okay.
No increasing fees or anything.
And then next year, we'll probably expand to 2021. I see that there's an RFP, so we'll probably get more recommendations for next year from other organizations. That basically, we're just filling a gap for a year till we do that again?
Correct.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chair, just briefly.
Sure.
So, a quick question. The contract is with Humane Animal Rescue and Dan Rossi, and they just do an amazing job, and I don't know how they do half of what it is that they do. The reason that we're going out for RFP in 2021 is because there's requirement to do that at this time?
Well, it's more along the lines of just to see what's out there. Also, you're right, HHR does do a fantastic job, but they have been saying in our meetings with Dan Rossi, they have been saying that they may want to themselves not be part of our contract anymore. So we may have to look for other avenues or other resources.
That would be unfortunate. I hope that's not the case. I would respect his decision, but I have to pile the kudos on Dan and Humane Animal Rescue for doing one hell of a job in a very difficult situation.
Agreed.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill 802.
Bill 802, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Safety to Enter on Behalf of the City into a Professional Services Agreement with the Center for Emergency Medicine of Western Pennsylvania for the Provision of Medical Direction Services at an overall cost not to exceed $30. Said agreement shall commence on January 1st, 2021 for a term of three years and expire on December 31st, 2023.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Bill is recommended. That takes us to Land Use and Economic Development Committee, chaired by Councilman Wilson. First deferred paper is Bill 646.
Bill 646, Resolution Providing for the Designation as a Historic Structure under Title 11 of the Code of Ordinances that Certain Structure Known as the John P. Robin Civic Building Located at 200 Ross Street, First Ward.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill 682.
Bill 682, Resolution Providing for the Designation as a Historic Structure under Title 11 of the Code of Ordinances that Certain Site Known as the Hanur Rosenberg House Located at 417 Lockhart Street, the Dostown in the 23rd Ward.
Motion to approve, discussion?
Second.
Councilman Wilson?
I just wanted to mention about all these historic designation bills that they're all supported by the owners of the property, and it was held for public hearing. And I will thank Councilwoman Gross for holding those meetings.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Councilman Coghill?
Yes, 200 Ross Street. Does that mean a buyer, if we find, do we have a buyer? Does anybody know, first of all? And if we, and if we don't, does that mean the structure has to stay as it is, as far as the exterior? I'm a little, does that make this place hard to sell? I'm a little, I guess, I guess I don't quite know what historic designation means to a developer and for this building in particular. Does anybody have an answer to that? Does that make sense?
Anyone from planning? Sorry.
Go ahead.
I didn't know if the question was directed at me or not, but you have to go to, I wasn't being snarky, Bruce, I promise. They, you go to the Historic Review Commission to apply for significant changes to the exteriors, is my understanding. So it's a public process, you know, as opposed to just going to the permit desk through the regular PLI process for building permits.
So did the city want this designated?
It's my understanding, it was nominated by, it's a tri-party cooperative agreement that owns the building. Yeah.
Okay.
I don't know that they did the nomination, but they're supportive, is what I read.
It just seems like the building's going to be hard enough to sell as it is.
Well, let's not sell it then, but that's another discussion for another day, isn't it?
Yeah, it's money, though, money. I thought we would sell it and put those proceeds to 412. I thought that was the plan.
Rental income is also, we're totally out of order here, Mr. Chair, but rental income is also revenue, isn't it, Mr. Coghill?
It is, but to get it to that point costs millions and millions.
And that's really not on the agenda today.
Okay. Yeah, I'll deal with it offline. We don't need to talk about this.
Any further discussion on Bill 682? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill 683.
Bill 683, Resolution Providing for the Designation as a Historic Structure under Title 11 of the Code of Ordinances that Certain Site Known as the Spring Hill School Located at 1351 Damon Street in Spring Hill in the 24th Ward.
Motion to approve, discussion?
Second.
Discussion, Councilwoman Wilson?
I just want to say that the Spring Hill School is, you know, it's been a, it's like two blocks away from me, and you know, that's where the local community group holds their meetings. And you know, in the past three years, the Pittsburgh Public Schools has really done a great job renovating the outside and making major renovations to the structure. And you know, although isn't once what it looked like, I think it was, part of it was chopped off at the top, you know, about 50 years ago, but the structure is, you know, it's great to see them really take care of a building like this. So I'm in full support.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? The bill is recommended. Let the record reflect, we're also joined by Council President Smith. One new paper, Bill 803.
Bill 803, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 840 of 2019, effective December 23rd, 2019, as amended, entitled Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2020 Capital Budget and the 2020 CDVG Program and the 2020 through 2025 Capital Improvement Program so as to identify specific projects in the city council districts 1, 4, 8, and the mayor's office and authorize a subsequent agreement for operation administrative expenses, maintenance, purchase of equipment, and/or rehabilitation of neighborhood facilities on behalf of the residents of the city.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? The bill is recommended. That takes us to our Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management Committee chaired by Councilwoman Strasburger. One deferred paper, Bill 521.
Bill 521, Resolution Repealing, Amending, and Re-Acting Resolution Number 18 of 1983, effective January 20th, 1983, titled Resolution Authorizing and Directing the Bureau of Cable Communications, Department of Public Works, Broadcast all of City Council's regular legislative sessions, standing committee meetings, setting forth the responsibilities of the Department of Innovation and Performance with respect to meetings of city council and to reflect various changes in the city's departmental organization structure and other changes to reflect technological innovations since 1983.
I can make the most if you want to, Erica.
Please do, I was going to defer to you.
Yeah, let's hold for six weeks.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Bill will be held six weeks. That takes us to our Intergovernmental Affairs Committee chaired by Councilwoman Gross. We have a number of deferred papers, Bill 192.
Bill 192, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewer Facilities Plan for the Villas at Winter Park in Haxtown Street.
A motion to approve a discussion?
Second.
So this is 15203, and I'm afraid I'm not familiar. We held it last time.
Yes.
I thought, I was supposed to text you to see what you wanted to do with it.
And I was in the process of texting you. Could we please hold this here, brief discussion? This has been a very controversial development that has been on our plates for probably four, five, six years now. I have reached out several times to the developer without any success to have communication as to what they wish to do at this point in time. I did speak with the person in charge of the sewer module and moving it forward. She had no real suggestions as to how I could reach the contractor. So without any real communication on it, I'd like to motion to hold another six weeks.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thanks, Councilwoman.
Any opposed? Bill will be held six weeks. Bill 635?
Bill 635, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewer Facilities Plan for 1501 Penn Avenue.
Motion to approve a discussion?
Second.
I'm just counting my weeks on my calendar here. Six weeks takes us into the beginning of December. This is, I held it last time for just three weeks, but it's nowhere near getting through plan. It hasn't gone back to planning commission. This is again, the giant tower proposal in the Strip District that was rejected. It's kind of back to the drawing board. It hasn't come back to planning. So I'll say motion to hold for four weeks.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill will be held, you said four weeks, correct?
I did.
Okay. That takes us to Bill 709.
Bill 709, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewer Facilities Plan for the 38th Street Mason Deville Town Homes Project.
Motion to approve a discussion?
Second.
I'm not sure. I literally have kind of reviewing the notes of my staff, looking up the permitting status of each of these. And I'm gonna go ahead and motion to approve this one, if you don't mind indulging me. If I get a different update by Tuesday, we may hold it again or recommit, if that's all right with you. Thank you.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill 793?
Bill 793, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewer Facilities Plan for the 3173, 3719, and 3721 Butler Street.
Motion to approve a discussion?
Second.
Just to say that these next two bills don't have any permits yet at all. I mean, they haven't gotten their approvals from zoning or anywhere that my staff can find. So I'm going to motion to hold three weeks on 793.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Bill will be held three weeks. Bill 794?
Bill 794, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewer Facilities Plan for the 27th 51st Street Renovations Project.
Motion to hold three weeks.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Bill will be held three weeks. That, we have exhausted our agenda for today. We do have some meeting announcements. This afternoon at 1:30 p.m., a cable cast public hearing is scheduled via the Zoom platform on Bill 702 and 703 as they relate to naming previously unnamed trails in South Sat Park and Highland Park to key to Keeling Coal Trail and Cattail Trail respectively. To register to speak, please call the clerk's office at four one two two five five two one three eight by eleven thirty A M today. Um, you may also submit comment by emailing the city clerk's office at PittsburghPA.gov. Please note that written comments will not be read during the meeting. In addition to council's regular and standing committee meetings next Tuesday and Wednesday at ten A M, the Cable Cast Public Hearing is scheduled for next Tuesday, October twenty-seventh, at one thirty P M on the Zoom platform on Bill seven seven nine as it relates to inter municipal liquor license transfer for Cabaret LLC. Um, is there any other meeting announcements from members? Councilman Kraus.
Just a quick question, please. Madam President.
Yes.
Good morning, what's your pleasure? We have, uh, two renaming, um, bills that are coming up for public hearing today. One for Councilwoman Gross, one for me.
I was just texting the two of you to see if either you wanted to chair your meetings. And if not, then I would, I just didn't know what you wanted to do.
Yeah. Uh, Councilwoman Gross, do you have preference?
I'm sorry, if you'd like to chair, that, I'll just be there then.
And I'll be there as well, so it's up to you, Madam President.
Okay, then you can chair. Thank you.
I'll be happy, I'll be happy to, one thirty?
Yes.
Okay, I'll be there, thank you.
Thank you, thank you both.
Thank you. Anything else? All right, then we need a motion to excuse the absent member, uh, prove the minutes and adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
You are adjourned.
Thanks, everybody.